Please rise for the pledge. Cecily, roll call please.
Counselor Gorley?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
President Pro Tem Muller?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present. Let the record show that we have seven present and zero absent. Moving on, consent agenda. There are three minutes in the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Cecily, please call for the vote.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and zero nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Before we hear public comments from people present, we are going to have a recognition of public service, and Chief Ogden's gonna take it away.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me present this tonight. I'm pretty excited about this as Council is more than likely aware. It was two weeks ago that we had a pretty significant incident here in Sweet Home. Just to give a little context, we had a juvenile in town make a social media post. And in that post, this particular juvenile was holding a gun and made a reference to the Sweet Home High School. It was brought to my attention. One of the members here tonight who's going to receive an award had brought the social media post down to the police department, the daughter and father. And as soon as I saw that, I reached out to the Sweet Home School District and contacted Superintendent Terry Martin. We had met, and during that time that we were meeting, we were unable to locate this juvenile. And as you all know, school ended up being shut down for a couple of days. And I think the thing that really impressed me about the way that this incident was handled was just the relationships that we have established with the school district from the city and the PD. It was phenomenal. We came together. We put a plan together, acted on that plan, and everything about that plan just went so, so smoothly. And so, we have, as you can see in the back, we have a lot of employees from the Sweet Home Police Department that worked on this case very hard. We were able to wrap it up and make an arrest in, I think it was just under 24 hours. And so, I'm extremely thankful for my staff. I'm extremely thankful for the Sweet Home School District, as well as members of the public, that we came together. I mean, this is what Sweet Home is about, right? This is, this is coming together and taking a problem that we had and solving it quickly due to the existing relationships. And so, I have a couple of awards, and I'm gonna read the first one. This is going to be for the members at the Sweet Home Police Department, for the staff there. And I will call each one up individually and hand out a few things. But the first award is the Chief's Award of Merit. And I want to read the description of this. "The Chief's Award of Merit is awarded at the discretion of the Chief of Police to recognize acts of exceptional dedication and commitment in service to the department and the community. It represents the highest standards of professionalism, bravery, and teamwork. At this time, I would like to begin calling up staff members to receive the award." So what I have done for this award, there is a certificate that has the award description on it. It's signed by me, and as a token of my appreciation to staff, I have a challenge coin from the PD, which is really cool. And then additionally, a challenge coin from the city. So the first person I'd like to call up is Captain Ryan Cummings. There's that. There's that. I just want to say, Ryan really probably carried most of the weight with this case. He, this is what I love about our leadership, is he just stepped in and really, really problem-solved this, made many connections with, we worked with the FBI on this, and just really carried a heavy load for this. And Ryan, I really appreciate what you did for that. Thank you so much. The next is Officer Daniel Girkman. Getting two city coins because I forgot to give you one on the last one that you got. Here's your challenge coin, and here's your certificate. And Daniel is our traffic officer, and he just happened to be on duty during this time and just was helped in a great way, just by making contact with the suspect when that came up. And I just want to thank you for everything that you did with this case. Thank you so much. Yep. Next is Sergeant Jeff Hamlin. Sergeant Hamlin was the first person that made me aware of this incident. And as you all know, Sergeant Hamlin used to be a school resource officer. And so, it was great to have him working that evening. He came over to the school district office as we were meeting and trying to develop a plan. And I just, I really thank you for all of the help that you did with this case. Yep. Hold on. I just forgot something. We have, we have pens for the, for the employees. Yes. Why don't you come back up and get your pens? Sorry about that. The next award goes to Commander Penny Leland. As you know, Penny is our dispatch supervisor, and she worked, she did a lot on this case as far, don't shake your head. You did do a lot. You worked a lot on this case of getting a brochure ready. One of our dispatchers in the back actually put together the brochure of our suspect. And Penny has connections with Titan Fusion where we send these brochures, and they get sent out regionally. And so, I just want to thank you so much for doing all of that work. I know you do a ton behind the scenes, and we are so thankful for that. Next is dispatcher Katie Lyon. I'll say the same thing about Katie as I did with Penny. Tons of behind-the-scenes work. She was working those days, and I'm super thankful for everything that you did. Thank you so much. Next is Officer Cody McPherson. Cody was also one of the officers that was on during shift when we made the suspect arrest. And I'm thankful for everything that you did. You were completely involved in this case throughout the entire shifts. And I just want to thank you for all your hard work. Thank you. Detective Sean Potter? Is he here tonight? He's on a call. Okay. Well, I will get this to Detective Potter later, but Detective Potter also worked on this case.
...spent the money and hired a small-town individual who worked in large urban areas and quickly moved on. Chief Dog, Chief Ogden is here. He's doing two jobs. We'd be lucky to have someone of his caliber serve as city manager. We have a good man in the chair. Your own side did expert tells you that it's going to be delicate to hire? It's not gonna be delicate. It's gonna be hard. My question to the council is with going internal, external, hearing the debate, good reasons all, but what message are you sending? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Ken Bronson?
I'm Ken Bronson. I live out in Jaff, I'm a foster at 6313 Lake Point Way. And we have to talk about the city manager position as well. I guess this room is just full of compliments for our police chief, his support staff, his people who are under, working under him. You know, we just, we just got this really good team here. And we haven't had very good luck on the recruiting trail, and it doesn't look like it's a real good time to push our name out there. So what I'm thinking here, just, just thinking outside of the box, because this is Sweet Home. We do this well. Do something that's different. And hey, you got a very good police chief here. You got a very good city managers here. Let them be both. Let them have the support that's underneath them. Do it for a year, see how it's working, and then take a look at it. And by then, things should be a little clearer out there on the, on the recruiting trail and, you know, see what's going on. And I mean, I don't need to tell you how much value there is here. I did have to be fully transparent here. I did talk to him about this. He thinks it's a good idea as well. So compensate the man for what he's worth. Don't try fixing what's already working here with bringing another problem in. Go with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Robert Egner?
Hello, Robert Egner. I live at 28628 Ridgeway Road. Unfortunately, I'm not here to talk about anything as quite as positive today. I'm here to talk about some of the recent hit pieces in the news. That is what I'm going to call them on a sitting counselor. A recent article bolstered how a certain counselor who has bullied other counsel has, quote, "pushed them out," them and others out. It talks about him rolling his eyes during meetings, his lack of attendance and behavior. While I agree that this counselor has missed what I would classify as a ridiculous amount of meetings, and by no means do I find it acceptable, I have to, and have expressed my disappointment in that, as well as the fact he recently left a meeting after a fairly heated vote when the public wanted to talk. I also find it difficult to stomach after all these years of coming to these meetings, and for that matter, the pushback that is seemingly directed at newer counsel in recent meetings. While the media and, and the others on this daisantly disregard the actions of another sitting council member that has literally committed illegal acts in this very building. Has everyone forgotten that you left a loaded firearm in the restroom here at the City Hall, violating a minimum of RS 166.36395 for safe storage of firearm, and possibly a worst-of-class E felony, RS 166.360? Because it's a public building... Lost my spot, sorry. Anyways, it was crickets when, when all that happened. From the media and the council, the same counselor sits here bimonthly, rolling his eyes, throwing his head back when people discuss people of color, taxes, fee increases, being a burden on the people of our community, et cetera. The same counselor that goes to local major businesses and major employers of our community and wants to fight inside, and fight inside of his business in front of his employees and customers. And let's not forget, again, commits an act in a heated moment after a board meeting at the fire department, while believing he is entitled to literally steal things from our fire department. Again, crickets from the media and from counsel. No-hit pieces in the media. If anyone in this audience were to do what this counselor has done in this building or the fire department, they'd be trespassed and likely cited or arrested. They would likely lose their right to carry a firearm, and yet again, crickets. Next time it's decided to bring in the local media to do a hit piece on counsel, may I suggest targeting a counselor that has actually hurt our community while committing these blatant nefarious acts, rather than use the seemingly divisionary lines between old and newer counsel that I have witnessed. Thank you for your time.
Don Miller?
My name is Don Miller, 3318th Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon. I'm here kind of on dual purpose. I was out of the state briefly for a family situation. And I did in, in, actually, address Cecily about resigning from running for city council. At the time, I felt that that was probably a better solution. But the solution has remedied itself. And now I'm hearing all over City of Sweet Home that I resigned and I'm no longer running for council. I want it on record. I'm here. I'm fully prepared to run for city council. So just for, you know, record purposes, I'd like that noted. The other thing is, is on the recruitment for city manager. I think it's imperative that we try to bring a person to that position, very much like Chief Ogden, that has a commitment to this community, has ties to this community, lives in the community, knows the people of the community. So I think in our search for a city manager, we need to look within our own population. We have, we have talent in this town, lots of talent. So that's my take on that. And then the third one, I'm going to probably table it for the coffee meet and greet. But I do think that it's imperative that we get this information out to the community and give them a chance or an avenue to express their thoughts and opinions on recruitment of the city manager. There's a lot of people out there, a lot of opinions. And with that, that's, that's where I'm at, and I'll see you Thursday night.
Sounds good. Thank you, Don. Teresa Howard, you're next. It's been covered. Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Farrell Montgomery? Name and address for the record, please.
Sweet Home native, 75. Present, actually, for the last 25 years, I've been a nomad and presently RVs part not far from the Fish Hatchery at By the Dam, everything. But anyway, yeah, a community of Sweet Home. The last couple of months, we've seen crazy things happen in society and everything. I'd like to address the possibility that the community of Sweet Home adopt an emergency plan that covers civil emergencies. plan that covers civil emergencies. Because when I look at state and county emergency plans, I haven't found a formally adopted one for the city yet. But they have a tendency of dealing only with natural emergencies, you know, natural And I think we all know that less than two months ago, things have been happening that could have created tremendous amounts of turmoil. Now, with exceptional things occurring in our world and society today, and it can have serious impacts on our local community, especially if it gets to the point where we start having, you know, like chronic internet outs or chronic utility droppings, things like that. Instead of everybody running for cover as individuals, I believe if the community can work together, create a, maintain a safe environment for us all to work together through whatever emergency might come up. Anyway, I think it would greatly, matter of fact, military experience shows that the chances of the population of a community surviving intact with civility goes up tremendously if they can work together and everything. And so I'm, I would like to ask the community to adapt a civil emergency plan. And it's not my area of expertise. I've written down, you know, some, well, some things that I think I would like to suggest. And I've already forwarded some early versions of that to some different members and everything. But anyway, so that was it. My heartfelt, I love Sweet Home. I was born and raised here. This is the, I think this is the best place in the whole world for teenagers to grow up the Cascade Mountains and everything. But I've been gone for like 40 years. I've only been back for a few years, but I don't want to leave. You know, this is, this is my roots and everything. And anyway, that's it. You know, rah rah rah, you know, go Huskies and stuff.
Yes. Thank you, Farrell.
That was it. I would like, I would like the city to adapt an emergency plan.
Okay.
And I'll continue to be in communication with the people I have been. And I'm hoping that they could, you know, come up with something equal or better than I can come up with.
Okay. Thank you, Farrell, and welcome back to Sweet Home.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Elizabeth Curtis?
Elizabeth Curtis, and I'm at 1769 12th Avenue, Sweet Home. And I'm going to echo what Farrell Montgomery just shared about the importance. I know that this city has worked very hard on an environmental impact. However, the potential of civil unrest, election integrity, uncertainty, even the ballot boxes, not sure what can we trust this situation? Foreign and cartel influences in our towns and communities. If we don't address it before it happens, we can't really bring people together and really work through a situation. And so Farrell and I felt very seriously that something like a risk assessment and planning at various different levels would be really an encouragement to our community. I know, I know that it's deep in all of our hearts right now, what's going on in our nation. And I would just share that, you know, Sweet Home, wouldn't it be neat if it could be a role model to help other communities around our country be able to pull something together? And Red Cross is particularly concerned about belief that we aren't mind controlled or that we really hold on to what we believe as a community. Air, water, and soil checked, food security, that we connect our banks with our farms so we have local networks of farm engagement, warmth, that means energy, and then shelter, private property rights that wouldn't be taken away from us. So one more thing I'd like to share is that there is a new free speech platform. I've thought to add briefly, but it's called USrepublic.us. And it's a very good way for us to get accountability in our communities to what is ground truth and what is going on. And it feeds up through our elected officials to a national platform. And it's, you can belong to it if you're pro-American and pro our country. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay. That was the end of public comments. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action, resolution number 20 for 2024.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. As you're all familiar, we're revisiting resolution number 20 for 2024 regarding the appointment of a new city attorney. Since we've previously discussed this in both open and executive sessions, I'd like to provide a brief update on where we stand. So I'm happy to report that Blair Larson has successfully passed the Oregon bar and is scheduled to be sworn in on October 10th. Until then, he will continue in his role as the KED director while working closely with Robert Snyder. Once he's in that role, he'll be expected to work 30 hours a week to support city council, municipal court, and city staff. So with this update, if there's no further concerns about the contract, I recommend that we move forward with option three, approving the resolution number 20 for 2024 to officially appoint Blair Larson as our new city attorney. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions of councilors?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm going to vote no on this just because I worry about how much experience he has had previous. And I feel like we need a lawyer that's got more, you know, like some, some type of experience at least, a little bit more. That's just my only concern.
Were there any questions of councilors for staff or regarding the staff report? Hearing no questions, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, we've had plenty of opportunity to kick this candidate on the road and have conversations. And we've heard from the public that they would like us to hire in-house whenever possible. And this candidate has in fact worked on resolutions and different things for us and worked with councillor Snyder. And I'm very, very grateful councillor Snyder worked with us and his patience with continuing in that position, but it's been a long time. And with that, so moved is recommended.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do also want to say thank you to Mr. Snyder for his patience as we've kicked this subject around for a long time. It's long past May 11th, which was his preferred retirement date. But I also appreciate Mr. Snyder's willingness to mentor and also work alongside Director Larson as he pursues this new position if it passes. So any other discussion? Cicely, please call for a vote.
Councillor Gorley?
Aye.
Councillor Richards?
No.
Councillor Sanchez?
No.
Councillor Thorstad?
Yes.
Councillor Trask?
Yes.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes. Like the record show that we have five yeses and two nos to approve resolution number 20 for 2024. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Congratulations, Director Larson. Request for council action, contract approval for Nandina overlay project.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors again. Tonight, we're considering the approval of a contract for the Nandina Street overlay project. This is going to be, if you're familiar with Nandina Street, between 9th Avenue and 12th Avenue. So it's just north of Main Street. So the purpose of the RCA is to approve and review the contract. A little bit of background on Nandina Street. So there has been a recurring issue of maintenance over the years for this particular road. And if you've ever driven on it, it's in pretty bad shape right now. So we've used temporary fixes like pothole patching, crack sealing, things like that, which has been costing the city about $2,500 a year. However, we're seeking a more permanent solution, and that is needed. We looked into chip sealing, which we've considered before, and that cost would be upwards of $50,000. And the chip sealing unfortunately only lasts a couple of years. So instead, the proposed overlay would cost about $77,740, will last a minimum of eight to 10 years. Currently, the good news is, is we have $50,000 in a surface transportation block grant, STBG funding that needs to be allocated before the end of the month. So this project allows us to make use of those funds before they are lost. So the remaining $27,740 would come from the city's transportation fund, which we have, which has sufficient funding available. So with that, staff is recommending option three to approve the contract as proposed. And staff is happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions of councilors?
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Mm-hmm.
I just love road construction. This is my jam. I just hope we could buy a paver because this is really expensive and I have to recuse myself because this is a conflict of interest.
Thank you for your honesty there. Any other comments or questions of councilors?
Madam Mayor, I actually drove down there today, and I just want to say it definitely needs paved, so I'm happy to see this on here.
Madam Mayor, so moved is recommended.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I have to say that I'm grateful to, I'm also just really grateful to staff for finding creative ways to fix our streets. This grant, I know it was something that was out there that we became aware of, but just it's a hard thing to find funding to fix our streets. So thank you for your dedication to that. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the overlay project. Cicely, please call for a vote.
Councillor Richards?
Aye.
Councillor Thorstad?
Yes.
Councillor Trask?
Yes.
President Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councillor Gorley?
Yes.
And Councillor Sanchez, I have you noted as recused.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and one recusal. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, reports of committees. Any reports from committee members or liaisons to committees?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I've had a few health things come up. So is it fine if Josh just takes over the traffic committee till the next election?
Well, as councilors, we are all, we are all assigned to separate committees to represent our community and hear from our community. So it'd be best if you had a committee to be assigned to.
It's no problem. I can make it work.
Just want to make an announcement that we do have the community health committee tomorrow. And we had a very successful health fair that I was unable to attend, but I heard it went very well. And they were able to hand out resources to our community that needed them. So thank you all for participating in that. Councillor Gorley, thank you. Any other reports from committees? Department director reports?
Madam Mayor, a couple items.
Okay.
As I mentioned last week, we have our, we have our housing production strategy that we are working on. And we have, we have scheduled the, a work session on the, at the, before the October 8th meeting, that would be at 5:00 PM on October 8th. That same effort will have a joint public hearing that will take place during the November 12th regular council meeting. Beyond that, we also are finally getting toward the end of our transportation system plan. We have a schedule now that if we can keep, will be ready for adoption in February. The, we are hoping to have a joint work session with the city council and the planning commission on November 12th at 5:00 PM. And so if that timing and date can work for the council, that would help us keep on track.
So. Thank you.
I guess I'm asking, is that, does that work for all of you?
It works for me.
Again? November 12th, 5:00 PM.
That'll work.
Yep, councilors? Yeah. I thank you for also the update on the transportation plan. I was going to ask you about that, so.
I asked something real quick. Are you going to, are you going to double deal with LIKEM? You're going to do your other job too?
I have a number of projects that I'm working on that I will be transitioning over, but I'll still be around to provide that history.
Thank you. Director Spengman?
Yeah, I'm going to give you just a brief update on, a little bit on the wastewater plant, and then I'll go into the drawdown. We were able to make a lot of headway. We purchased a couple of units from Lebanon this year at a significant discount. And we were able to, at the wastewater plant, drop both of our aeration basins and do a complete cleaning on both of those tanks. Those tanks hadn't been cleaned out like that in probably 20-plus years. We removed over 40 yards of sand material out of the bottom of those tanks, which was taking a lot of capacity out. But also by adding those hurricane units, we have been able to give much more oxygen supplemental to help with the treatment process. And what's happened is, we used to have residual ammonias, which we don't have a limit for, but those are disappearing really quick. And so now we have options in how we want to treat the plant, which we didn't have before. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, that DQ is happy, they, they seem to be very pleased. These are type projects that make or break plants. And I really didn't understand how bad it was until we got in there. But we brought people from Public Works, we brought little tractors in and scooped out, but we spent a good day on each tank and we did a full cleaning. And so I just wanted to report that back, that it's, plant's operating well. It's even better with the sludge construction project that we finished this year. So those together have really made a big difference in our water quality. Last couple of months, we've been in compliance. And so I want to keep going in that trajectory. So, but really what I want to talk about tonight is the Green Peter drawdown and just give you a little bit of update. As we all know, last year it started the drawdown like in July, and it was, it was gradual. This year is going to be a very quick drop. They're slowly dropping right now, but come mid-October, they're going to hit that point and it's going to start dropping. And that's when we're probably going to start seeing some turbidities. And we're prepared for that. Last year, the drop dead date to refill was December 16th. But because of operational circumstances for the Army Corps, this could linger to the end of December. So again, they're doing it quicker. It lasted about two and a half months last year. It's probably going to be somewhere in that same neighborhood this year, about two and a half months. Some of the things that we've done at the plant this year that put us in a significant advantage compared to last year is, first of all, knowledge. We didn't know what we were up against last year. We had done complete cleanouts of both backwash basins. And the material that we removed, there was quite a bit, looked just like the bottom of Green Peter, if you were able to see pictures, mirrored the same color, you know, that tan material. And we had a lot of it in there. So our backwash ponds are clean. One other thing that we didn't have last year was the new backwash BTD pump. If you remember, we didn't install it because we didn't want to have to install that during the drawdown. And so we waited until January to actually install that. It is now functional operation, all the construction is complete. And what that does is allows us, kind of getting in the weeds here, but it allows us, before, we could either backwash or we could produce water and push it out in the system with the way our pumping system was. Now we have a dedicated backwash pump that can use our reservoir underneath to then backwash our filters. If we need to push more water out, we have the other pumps that can do that at the same time. Where before, if we had full reservoirs and we were in more backwash mode versus production mode, our reservoirs start dropping. And we got probably down to a third on our reservoirs last year until we really got going and getting our filters. And so I'm kind of excited a little bit to see how this is going to operate because I think it's going to put us in a better advantage. We're still going to be dealing with the turbidities, but it'll put us at an advantage. Another thing that we didn't have last year is that we were in the process of a filter media change, and we had completed two of those tanks within the first week of that drawdown. We had to do the third tank. And so these have all been, the media's all replaced, they've been topped off, and they're ready to go, they're operating outstanding. We have ordered necessary chemicals, treatment on site, and so we make sure that we have a enough. I don't want to get into a delivery, storage or any type of concern. I want to have it on site before we get into the drawdown. And so that's taken place. Staff will be monitoring turbidities and also the water treatment plant operations for 24/7. We have improved SCADA, but also we have some current stream monitors that have been updated from HAWK. And HAWK is a kind of a supplier of devices that control and read different things. These are going to allow us to be a little more automated. Last year, it was all push buttons, guys had to sit on a screen. So once we set our levels of what the treatment pH needs to be and our soda ash and our alums and all those things and our disinfection, we can plug those into the computer and the computer will kind of run things. Still have to monitor, but it might not be as labor intensive with those current stream monitors opposed to bench testing every hour, right? We're supposed to do some bench testing, but it's not going to be derived from that the whole time. And I kind of mentioned this at the start of my report, the water treatment plant and distribution staff learned a lot from last year, you know, how we push water out. We also did a knee jerk reaction and, you know, we're very fortunate here in Sweet Home to have pristine water. And so it doesn't take much to treat it, doesn't take much chemical to disinfect it. We're lucky that way, right? We're at the top of the chain, a lot of it's snow melt. And most of the time, under normal conditions, our water is in pristine state. So it doesn't take much to do this. But when the turbidities rise up, more alum, more pH control, soda ash and other chemicals that go in there, we also were disinfecting a little higher to make sure that we were, and we were still within range, you can go from anywhere up to four parts per million. We bumped it up to just below two parts per million. We're not going to do that this year. We knew that we operated best right about one to 1.2 in our disinfection. And so I think a lot of the odors that were coming out of the system, and so I think we learned a lot about that. But also by turning up the chlorine, it scoured and disinfected our distribution system a little better. And so there was a lot more flushing, a lot more disturbing of the lines. And so we've learned more about that and how we should operate that. And so I'm anticipating that to be improved. Now, the one area that I think that's kind of going to be the unknown for all of us, and that's going to be the, you know, customer communications and dealing with how they perceive our chlorine residuals and color, if we have any. And I think the important part is that we communicate with everybody. If somebody calls and they have concerns, we go out and meet with them. And so we have already had a meeting today internal, we've had already two drawdown meetings with all the other cities and Army Corps, and I believe we have another one next week. Right now, I think we're in a good place, we're ready to go. Will the water quality change in the city of Sweet Home? Absolutely. It's going to do just like last year, but I think we're more prepared and ready to take that on. So if you have any questions, feel free to answer those.
Thank you so much, Director Springman. I'm so glad you are back in this seat, but also glad to have your expertise in this area as we face this next drawdown. Director Daisy, were you going to share anything regarding your report?
I just wanted to note that starting October 7th, we are going to have additional open hours at the library. On Fridays, we're going to be open an hour earlier and stay open an hour later. And then on the first and third Monday every month for an hour, we're going to have a low sensory hour where we'll have fewer, no computers available, it'll be quiet time. We've had a lot of requests for this, so we're going to try it out and see how it goes.
Nice. Thank you so much for that update. I'm grateful for all of the staff that we have here in Sweet Home. I think they do an exceptional job. Moving on, reports of city officials, city managers report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. I just want to kind of piggyback off what you just said. I was just thinking as Director Springman was talking about all of the prep that goes into what we have coming with the drawdown. We were in a meeting today and I was just really impressed with Director Springman's staff and just the knowledge that they have and the preparedness that we have for what's coming up. And so I'm thankful for that. And for Director Brown, we've reached out to him several times with questions regarding finances and I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you do for us, as well as for the rest of staff. I'm just super thankful for the team that we have here. Another update, pleased to inform the council that we have initiated the process with gathering some quotes from contractors for the improvements in renovations over next door in City Hall here for CSC. So we're excited to be getting some movement there. The next thing I want to report is I have submitted for an application for a grant through, the Lynn County Sheriff's Office is actually handling this. And it's aimed at upgrading some of our dispatch radio communication systems, as well as some programming that needs to happen with our radios. Basically, jumping on to, instead of using our own radio towers, being able to access theirs, which would be absolutely tremendous because it would give us far-reaching communication way outside the city. I think the county has some plans of putting up another tower just east of town within the next few years. And so anyway, I've submitted the application and I am hopeful that we will be able to make some upgrades. We shall see. The last thing I just wanted to remind council is the Harvest Festival is coming up Saturday, October 5th. And it's just a great opportunity to connect with our community and continue to develop those relationships. And Angela has put a lot of work and effort into this and she does such a great job every year. So I'm really looking forward to that. So that's what I have.
Thank you so much. And onto the next thing is mayor's report. And I just want to say that, piggyback off what Director Springman said and all the preparation that the staff is doing, getting ready for the drawdown. We are in the middle of, but I'm not going to announce right now, but planning a meeting with the Corps and the Watershed Council where the public can have some input or hear about what's going to be coming up. We'll have those details out as soon as we have them set. So just want you to know that they've been in communication and we'd like to increase the communication to our community before this all happens. The Harvest Festival is coming up and there will be a community input survey that will be taken there. It'll be electronic, but also people can fill it out on paper and so that'll be available for people. I just submitted to the school district, Terry, you may have an email in your inbox from me regarding the If I Were Mayor contest, which we're hoping the school will participate in like they did last year. That was lots of fun to hear from the students. I had a question from community members regarding Citizens Academy and those that attended really thought it was beneficial. So I just want to thank staff for putting that on the homepage where I missed it, but it's there. And all of the information from that meeting is present there and it's really beneficial for people to review. So if people have questions, you can direct them to that. The community market, somebody was here last week who, and they were asking about space for the community market to set up on Saturdays, since they're no longer going to be in the parking lot because of the rainy season, they're still looking for a place. So if you know of any building that would be willing to host them, keep your eyes and ears open. The library board needs another member, so if there's anybody, look at all of the people here tonight. You could all volunteer to serve on the library board. You can get applications from Cecily. And that's all I have except I'm happy Rashashana to Counselor Sanchez, which is next week. Anything else from council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, may I? So I just want to give another thanks to Chief and the school and the community members that did everything they could to make sure our children were safe. That means a lot to all of us. The other thing that I wanted to say is, we'll probably be here again, but October 15th is the last day to register to vote. We have 12 city councilors candidates for four seats. And so if you want to participate in that, make sure you register to vote. And this year, there's a bunch of measures, including measure 117, which is ranked choice voting, which is going to go statewide. People should really look into that because it will change the way we vote as a state from one vote, one person, to rank in order of preference. So I hope that everybody registers to vote and looks at that measure. Thank you.
Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, I just want to say again, Jason, thank you to all the police and all the department. Oops, I'll clean that up. Thank you guys again for doing everything. It makes me feel good that we were all safe and nothing bad happened. And I also want to say one last thing, I promise to work on my attendance. I want to apologize for that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I have a few minutes? Chief, did you ever come and arrest me for stealing something from the fire district?
I did not.
Why?
Well, we did not have a victim.
Oh, we didn't? Well, I'll be darned.
Nobody made a report.
I'll be darned, huh? Well, apparently somebody thought I did. And I went and I did went go down to the district and said, you know, I'm not very happy about being stoked, say I stole some stuff. And to be honest with you, I did patches for 30 years and I paid for 99% of them. And the reason I took them down, which I owned, okay? And if you have an issue with Who Wants to Talk, call George Virtue and ask him if I stole patches. Nick never said I did it. Somebody said I did, I don't know who it was, and I don't care because it's my stuff. I paid for it. And I think the mayor, former mayor would say the same thing. I did them for 30 years, okay? I did them for 30 years and I never stole one patch, not one. And you can say whatever you want, instead of coming and talking to me, no, don't put it on Facebook and don't accuse me of something I did not do. George came to my house twice and what is going on? What is going on? And I still got it on Facebook. I don't do Facebook, but I got from other people and it's just wrong. It's just totally wrong. And I want everybody in this room to have a chance to get a paper from the Democrat Herald. And you'll see the way this council has been treated forever, forever in this room. And it's just terrible that that had, and you can go and you can talk about the things that we got from people that were thinking that things would happen on here when we shouldn't have been, just totally ridiculous. And it looks bad for us. It looks bad for the whole council in the city. And we didn't do any of that stuff. We didn't. I didn't sit here and make funny noises or facing stuff. I didn't do that. And if I did, I wouldn't want to be told me. And anybody that has an issue with me, come to me, okay? Come to me and sit down with me and tell me what I did that you thought I did or I didn't do. I didn't. And it just bothers me. Now, the last thing I want to talk about, there was something else on the Facebook that says I was rude to a lot of people on the city here in businesses. Well, that isn't true. I started out at the point, I came down to O&amp;M and I called to the Spallettos and I went to ANW and I went to Thriftway, I went to the place that makes popcorn stuff there. And I went to all of those people and not one of them, even the pharmacy in Sweet Home, they didn't even say, you don't do that to us. Not one of them said I did that, not one. But it was blown all over the Facebook and it happens all the time. Okay? If you don't like me, I don't care. It's okay. We can disagree all the time. And if you do, just come and talk to me and disagree. I'm not beside that. Anyway, that's where I'm at and you should get a shot at this thing from the Democrat Herald. Thank you and I'm sorry I had to take.
Any council business for the good and for order? No? We will wrap this up at 7:33 PM.